I will call to order the November 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, this is the time we'll take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances this evening?
Chair Climan, there are no requests for continuances.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. Item number one are minutes of October 20, 2022. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the Commission. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to our public hearing items. Item number two, El Ranchito Outdoor Dining Patio Expansion, PA 2021-219. Site location 2800, 2806, 2812, and 2814 Newport Boulevard. Staff, please proceed.
Yes, good evening Chair Climan, and thank you to the Planning Commission for being here tonight. My name is David Lee, and I will be presenting this project. So this project has three requests. First is a coastal development permit, since the project is located in the coastal zone. The request is for an expansion to an existing outdoor dining patio for an additional 950 square feet of net public area. It also has a conditional permit, use permit involved, as it's required for an off-site parking agreement, and also for the continuation of an existing type 47 ABC license, existing live entertainment, and late hours of operation. And finally, a lot merger, since the proposed patio is over an existing property line. The lot merger would also add additional onsite parking, which I'll show in a later slide. This is the project location in red. It is located on Newport Boulevard and the corner of Newport Boulevard and 28th Street. The red is the existing restaurant, El Ranchito. The applicant is proposing a lot merger with the adjacent lot in yellow, and the off-site parking lot is two lots down, in blue. This is the proposed project site plan. As you can see, there's a lot going on here, so I'll try to break it down. This project consists of six total lots, the project, this site, and they're all owned by the owner of the restaurant in common. So the lot to the left is 2800 Newport Boulevard, which is the restaurant site. Two lots in the middle, which I just graded out, 2808 and 2810, is an office building with a parking lot, its own use, so it's not part of the scope of work of this project. So to take that layer off, as you can see, there's still a red line, which is an existing property line. The pink highlights the existing restaurant and outdoor dining, and the yellow is highlighting the proposed expansion of 950 square feet of outdoor dining. As you can see, it crosses the red property line, so that's the purpose of the lot merger, is to remove that interior lot line and to create this merged lot in red. The project includes the 12 onsite parking spaces, highlighted in blue, and since the overall requirement with the patio is now 24 parking spaces, the applicant is proposing to have a off-site parking lot, two lots over, for another 12 spaces, for a total of 24. Vehicles can enter through the yellow arrows through the alley, and pedestrians can walk approximately 60 feet on the public sidewalk to the restaurant entry. Just to go over some operational characteristics, there's no change to the net public area of the interior, but again, a 950 square foot addition to the exterior net public area. The parking requirement has increased to 24 spaces, and the applicant is providing 24. The hours of operation were not limited for both the interior and the outdoor in the previous use permit. However, now you can see that the new CUP has limitations and a condition of approval to change the hours of operation for both the interior and the outdoor. In terms of live entertainment, there is an existing live entertainment permit, and they have that operation. There's no change to that requested tonight. There's no dancing that was permitted before, and there's no change for that either. And previously stated, the applicant has a type 47 license that they operate with, and there's no change to that as well. Staff has made the findings in the draft resolution. First, that the patio would provide additional outdoor seating options for the patrons. Second, that the project has no proposed changes to the existing ABC license or alcohol service and live entertainment. The hours of operation are now able to be conditioned. Code enforcement and the Police Department have both reviewed this project, and they have no concerns. For the off-site parking lot is located in close proximity to the restaurant. And finally, the merger of the lot does not result in excessive lot size in comparison to the projects or lots nearby. As provided in the memo, this condition for the interior of the restaurant was not part of the resolution, and staff is requesting that the project include this. So it is the hours of operation for the interior of the restaurant shall be from 9:00 a.m. to midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Friday and Saturday. Staff recommends the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and approve the El Ranchito Outdoor Dining Patio Expansion. Just to note that the approval of this conditional use permit would supersede the old one, which is UP 1757, as well as the outdoor dining permit number eight. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also here as well, Sergio Avila, so they're available for questions too.
Thank you for that. Are there any Commissioners that have questions for staff at this time? Guess that's you.
Thank you, David, for that. Just to be clear, this is basically the layout of what is existing out there. It's just an improvement to the existing condition?
Yes, Commissioner, Secretary Rosin, that's correct. Well, there's currently an existing temporary
Tempor-
Yeah, temporary patio that was through a limited term permit for one year, and they're also, they can get another one-year extension, but it will be in a similar location and same footprint, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
A question from the police report. There is a section that has a discussion and recommendations, and there's a number of points in here. I'm just curious what staff's consideration was to include any of these in the conditions of approval.
Most of them were folded in. Was there something in particular that you were calling out?
Number four caught my eye. I'm just wondering if, like, a recommendation like that from the Police Department is, is that unique to this particular project, or is that common?
Do you want to bring up Wendy Jo from the Police Department?
Good evening. I'm Investigator Wendy Jo with the Police Department. Are you referring to, forgive me, number four, the quarterly sales of
Yeah.
that one we do? That's typical?
It is.
Yeah, we put them on everyone.
Okay.
And I believe that is included in the final. I went through this evening and just triple-checked to make sure that they're all included.
Commissioner Clausmer, that's condition number 46 on handwritten page 42. It's all wrapped into the project conditions.
Oh, I see. Apologies, I missed that. Okay, so essentially, all of the recommendations from the Police Department are included in the conditions then?
That's correct.
Okay.
There was the security plan recommendation. I didn't see that as part of number 42. It was in your memo, but it didn't get folded into?
That will be attached to the operator license when that's complete.
Okay, great. Well, you're up here. We have all the statistics relating to this area. Were there any particular calls for service for this property that we should be aware of?
No. In fact, the calls for service for this particular property are relatively low. There's 25 year-to-date, 39 in 2021. The majority of all those calls were geographical, meaning that location was tagged geographically for the officer to, you know, better describe where his location or her location. But there was very few notable calls for service, and I found that every time that they, there was a call from the restaurant, it was something that we would want them to call for. Nothing that would indicate poor business practices.
Okay, great. Nothing related to their liquor license or, because I know you mentioned in your report there were some liquor law violations
There are.
in this area.
There's, it's definitely an area with high undue concentration of alcohol licenses. It's a tourist destination, so part of that will come with the area. We did respond there for alcohol within the two-year period, but I don't think that there's anything out of the ordinary for the area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions for Wendy? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And staff, were there any code enforcement issues for the property?
No, not for the last two years at least.
Okay, great. Other questions from Commissioners for staff? Okay, do we plan to hear from the applicant, or?
The applicant does not have a presentation, but if you have questions for them.
I think prior to opening the hearing, if we can ask for ex parte communications.
Sure. We'll start at the other end.
I had none.
None.
None for me.
None.
None for me.
None.
And none for me. Just bring the applicant up to let us know if they agree with the recommended conditions.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Sergio Avila. I've been the owner of El Ranchito since 1975. Been probably as long as last seen restaurant in Newport Beach. But, so I'm here for any questions you might have.
We'll start with, are you in agreement with all of the recommended conditions of approval?
Yes.
Great. Are there any questions from Commissioners for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item?
Chair Climan, members of the Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. It's a minor point, but just as the operating hours were inadvertently left out, I did not find a CEQA exemption covering the lot merger. The two exemptions that are mentioned are for construction, they're not for mergers. And normally, a resolution of this kind would cite Class V, which is for minor alterations in land use limitations. It doesn't explicitly, even that one, address lot mergers, but it's normally what we include. And then the other comment I wanted to make is, I was intrigued by this, because at your last meeting, you had a study session about proposed new parking requirements. And as I understand it, for this kind of facility, the new proposal would be one parking space per 100 square feet rather than 50. So adding 950 square feet would only require nine or 10 new spaces instead of the 19 that you're putting here. But on the other hand, the 100-square-foot requirement is applying now to the entire area of the restaurant, which I'm understanding the staff report is currently 3,638. And you add 900, so it would be like 4,500 square feet. And under the new standard, this restaurant would need 45 parking spaces. So I think you might be curious or want to ask how the current parking is working with only five spaces and the proposed 20. If our future guess is if this was built today, it would need twice that number of parking places. So it seems pertinent to ask how the current parking is working. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Staff, is there anything Mr. Mosher's comment you'd like to respond to? CEQA perhaps?
I was just going to add that I think the Class I and the Class III exemptions that are there, you know, support the project as proposed.
Thank you. Commissioners? No other questions or comments?
I got one. I'm generally, I think this cleans up that patio pretty well. This restaurant's a staple of the community, and both theirs are. I think it's a nice addition. I think it's going to be a nice exterior, and I'm generally supportive.
Any other Commissioners?
I'll make a motion, though. I'll make a motion to approve PA 2021-219 with the addition of David Lee's condition of approval.
The one that staff recommended?
The one that staff recommended, yeah.
Regarding the hours. There are also a couple of duplicates I might note, number 13 and 15, and numbers 55 and 59. I don't know if you want to clean those up, if that needs to be part of the motion?
Yeah, so include cleaning those up as well.
That would be appropriate, thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll do that, second.
Call for the vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item number three, Morfontaine Holdings-
Sorry, Chair, for this item, I'm going to have to recuse myself. My primary residence is down the street from the subject residence.
Okay. Again, this is the Morfontaine Holdings LLC Residence, PA 2022-123. Site location 18 Harbor Island. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Yes, good evening, Chair Climan, members of the Commission. My name is Jaime Moreo, Principal Planner. I'll be presenting this item on behalf of Senior Planner Chelsea Krieger. This request is to allow for the construction of a new patio enclosure or patio cover. This, on this slide, you can see a rendering of the proposed patio cover. It's approximately 450 square feet. It'll be open on three sides with a trellis extension off the front. It's approximately 18 and a half feet tall to the top of the finial. This request requires a variance and a coastal development permit, because it is a request to encroach into the front yard setback, applicable to the property along one of the waterfront sites. The design of the trellis itself, such that it matches the architectural style of the main home. This is a vicinity map of the project location. It is located on the tip of Harbor Island. Harbor Island is located just south of Linda Isle, and west of Babo Island, and north of Bay Island. Harbor Island is a private gated community, so there's no public access onto the island. The key findings for consideration of their request is both the variance findings and coastal development permit findings, is that there's a special, unique circumstances that applies to this property that deprives the property owner of privileges or rights enjoyed by other property owners on the island. The variance itself cannot result in a special privilege to the property owner, and it can't be detrimental to persons working or residing in the area. Additionally, because it is within the coastal zone, we have to find that there's no impacts to public access, public views, or any coastal resources. This slide shows the subject property. Want to point out a few things. Harbor Island itself is unique in that a majority of the properties on Harbor Island are surrounded by what is called tidelands. There's an adjudicated mean-high tideline that runs from the property line to the US Bulk Headline, and that's shown in the purple shading. So this tidelands is managed by the county, however, it is rented to the property owners and allowed, allows use for accessory structures. And so ultimately, it is usable area by the property owner. But the property itself, you can see that it is on the corner of the island, and therefore it's subject to two large waterfront setbacks. Those waterfront setbacks are shaded in the green, and it's also subject to a third front setback along Harbor Island roadway there. And then lastly, there's a side setback of four feet, which is shaded in yellow. All in all, the setback limitations on the property do constrain the property, such that only 29% of the land area of the property is buildable for principal structures or large accessory structures, such as the proposed patio cover. The location of the patio cover is shown in the blue square in that slide. And so from a coastal aspect, again, gazeland is not visible from the public because it is a private island. There's no impacts to public access or views. And it's also located kind of further back from that more prominent corner of the property, where it's less visible from boaters or other views from the harbor itself. In terms of how this property is constrained and compared to other properties on the island, as I mentioned, this property is limited to 29% buildable area. We analyzed the buildable area of all the other properties on the island, and on average, the other lots have a buildable area of approximately 46%. The other property more constrained is the other property on the opposite tip of the island, which has similar constraints with two large waterfront setbacks. Lastly, a number of properties on the island, there's a total of 30 properties. Seventeen of them have been granted variances or modifications that allow for encroachments either with the principal structure or various accessory structures, such as fences and walls. And that just goes to show that there's a number of constraints related to the unique configuration of the island with the private tidelands and large setbacks that apply there. But all in all, staff is recommending approval of the variance request. We believe all the findings can be made, and we recommend that the Commission find the project exempt from CEQA under a Class III exemption and adopt the recommendation as proposed. And that concludes my presentation. The project applicant and the representatives are in attendance today. They don't have a presentation, but they are available for questions if there are any.
Great, thanks Jaime. Are there any questions from Commissioners for staff? Commissioner Rosin?
Are there any other improvements along that, the canal side, that are similar to this? Seems like all of the houses along there have a significant setback. Just, that's my recollection, but I don't recall any improvements that were extended out here. I know there were a lot of variances, but that's just my question, if there's anything other similar along that edge?
On the opposite edge, the property that's on the opposite end of the island, I know there's a gazebo structure located within that waterfront setback as well.
And that's the one with the 22.9%?
Correct, 36 Harbor Island.
Okay, you're right, I've seen that. But along the canal side, there really isn't, is there?
No, I think most of those structures are limited to shorter accessory structures.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, we'll do ex parte communications, starting with Commissioner Wigan.
Yes, I spoke with the applicant's consultant, and I had some questions regarding the property, but they were answered.
None for me?
None.
None for me.
None.
And none for me. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I guess I'll just bring up the applicant at least to accept the conditions, or if you have anything you want to add.
My name is Michael Sutherland, and I live at 33 Linda Isle, which is directly across the channel from 18 Harbor Island. And I guess our comments on this would be that
Sir, I'm sorry. If we- This is the time we were hoping to hear from the applicant. We haven't yet opened it up for public comments.
Excuse me.
It'll just be one more moment, so sit tight. Is there anyone here on the applicant's behalf to just accept the conditions?
Jake Winkle, owner's rep, and we accept the conditions.
Great. Are there any questions from Commissioners for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and take public comments at this time. Sir, if you wanted to, come back to the podium?
From my perspective, you know, one of the issues we have is that we have setbacks, and setbacks are there for a reason. And this is a big structure. It's, I think it's 20-something feet into the setback, and it's 17, 18 feet high, so, you know, from our house across the channel, it's going to be eyeball to eyeball. So, you know, that doesn't really do a lot for us, and, you know, there's a big clot there, there's a lot of places where that could be sighted, but they apparently wanted to be sighted out of their view, but it puts it in the view of the people on Linda Isle side. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Chair Climan, members of the Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. And again, I have a very minor comment, which I hope will be less controversial than the other one, on handwritten page 13, which is the first page of the proposed resolution. When I tried to read the title at the top that is in bold, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission, etc., etc.," it seemed to me that there was at least one word missing from that. When I look at the third line down, it says "approved," between the words "and" and "to", it seems like there's something missing. Approving a coastal development permit and to allow the construction. I believe the word "variance" is missing there. It's to approve a coastal development permit and variance to allow the construction. So that is my comment. And I also do- And I also do agree with the previous commenter that there could be impacts on views to people from not just Linda Isle, but from the water as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other comments at this time? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Are there any comments for discussion? Any additional thoughts? Commissioner Rosin?
It's a freestanding structure. Does there, there really isn't any specific opportunity to tie it into the, into the other structure to make it living or anything like that, but I don't know. Is it worth it to make that obvious in the conditions, that the building won't be attached? Or something to that effect, or...
Now, I think we could add a condition if we wanted to. I think the standard condition by compliance with the plans is sufficient, but we could make it explicit if you like.
I just wanted to think about that just real quick, so actually, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Harris?
It seems like from the county line, for all intents and purposes, that's really kind of where the law goes. Are there any restrict, and I apologize if this is in there, but I missed it. You said it's a long-term lease with the county. Are there any limits on that? Is that going to, you know, is there, does that, does that end at a certain time, or automatically extend?
There is lease terms within the agreement between the county and the property, and some have a lease between the city and the property owners. It depends on the property. Jim, I'm sorry. Do you know what happens at the term? It seems like these, we've renewed a number of leases over time, so I think as the lease expires, they have to return either to the county or the city to renegotiate that lease.
But if it was, if that's essentially the property line, then they're, they're not in the setback at that point, right?
Correct. So because it is, well, it's a little confusing because the setbacks are measured from the old, original property lines, and I think when the adjudicated mean-high tideline was created, what was behind mean-high tideline was granted to the property owners, and then what was the word of the mean-high tideline became considered filled tidelands. Typically, that would be reserved for public use, but in this case, because the island is private and it's not accessible, the county leases it back to the property owners.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wigan?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution. I'll, is it appropriate to add the word "variance" to that title? Was that inadvertently left out? Okay, let's add that to it.
I mean, the operative provision of the resolution on page 21 incorporates both the variance and the, and the CDP, but we can certainly clean that up as part of the motion.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, I mean, I'm reading a letter, too, from the closest impacted neighbor that would actually be of substance to that, and he's supportive of it. So I think this is just fine, and I'll make that motion to approve with those minor changes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to our next item, number seven, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, report by the community development director, or any request for matters which planning commissioner would like placed on a future agenda.
Chair Climen, I'll go ahead and give the director's report. Real briefly, last week, the city council met. The circulation element was adopted by the city council, so that has been accomplished. The Lido House Hotel project that you saw earlier, that was also approved by the city council. They did a reconsideration of the Newport Beach Tennis Club. That was the application over in Newport Center with Mr. Robert Hill is the applicant. It was a reconsideration of that item, and the city council arrived at the very same conclusion that they had done about three or four weeks ahead of that. So that project is still, they did not approve that project, and that project may be coming back with a substantive change to Ed Pickleball, so we'll see how that goes. So the next meeting for the city council, we've got the, I just want to let everyone to know, we've got the building and fire code going forward for adoption. Every three years, we update the building and fire codes. We'll be taking that to the city council here in November, and it will be effective January 1st. And then the next planning commission meeting is November 17th, but we have no business, and so we will be canceling that meeting. So the meeting after that would be December 8th. So mark your calendars for December 8th. We have, it looks like we have five public hearing items for that meeting. And that concludes my report.
And just because I know that it is on the public's mind, the fractional ownership, those meetings are underway and moving forward?
Yes, yes. So the, as you recall, the planning commission established a subcommittee to, not a subcommittee, but an ad hoc committee to examine the issue of fractional ownership. We've had two meetings, and that item is still under consideration. The city council has suggested or asked that we complete this review and have something for them by January 5th, the first meeting in January of 2023. And so we will continue to work that question and work that issue and bring something forward to the commission on that date or before that date.
So we're on track to hopefully make that happen?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on these items? Seeing none, we will move on to item number nine. Are there any requests for excuse absences from the commissioner? Seeing none, we are adjourned.